Councilman Ahmed Hassan. Councilwoman Deborah Johnson.
Here.
Councilwoman Laura Hopkins. Here. Vice Mayor Yasu. I see you there. We have a quorum to start the meeting. Good evening, everyone. I'm very happy to have our work session. And again, if you are not a council member, I would ask that you please mute your phone. During the work session, resident comment policy. Any member of the public may address questions or comments to the council referencing only agenda items after the mayor and council have had the opportunity to discuss the agenda item. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments. We don't have any presentations. And we'll go to section D, which is all business. And that is to discuss recommendations and approve to fill one vacant position on the planning and zoning board. And so with that. Let's see. So again, whoever is on the phone, if you can just make sure you mute your phone. Thank you so much. And so what I will ask is that for the Tuesday council meeting, I will bring nomination. I would ask if the council's indulgence that we can open it up until Friday for any other nominations. And then after the close of business, I will have a said name for you to then vote on at the council meeting on Tuesday. Is that fine with the council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, council. Is there any other discussion? From the council? Is there a discussion from the public? Okay, hearing none, we will move to new business, which is item E, standing advisory committees appointing, selecting chairs and vice chairs for this one. And Mr. Gomez, let me make sure I get my screen up for that. So Mr. Gomez.
Well, this is for the council to appoint your chairs and vice chairs for the standing advisory committees.
Right, but the, it doesn't show that on the agenda.
Just give me a moment and I'll pull it up. But they're in the information on the agenda.
Okay, and Mr. Metford, you sign up for D1. Please, please go ahead and speak.
Thank you. Just double checking point of order that I don't know if Stephen would have to or not. Since we actually created another opening on P and Z, would we have to reopen this for applications again and go through the application process? Just want to make sure we don't jump the gun.
That's what I said, to open it up until Friday.
Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna make that public announcement that they'll be open until Friday? Okay, just want to make sure, because I did not see that, so okay.
And that's why I said, we want to make sure in terms of opening it up, making sure that people have the opportunity. And from there, any other names to allow the people to have that opportunity to submit application so that it's open and available for everyone.
Excellent, thank you very much. Yep, just one clarification, thank you.
No problem, and thank you for your comment. Mr. Gomez, thank you very much. So as you can see, we have our committees, our standing committees. And so these standing committees are our Public Safety and Legal Committee, which currently are the co-chaired by Awet Yasu, Councilwoman Yasu, Councilwoman Johnson, Councilman Carol. We have the Housing and Infrastructure Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Carol and also Councilwomen Laura Hopkins and Deborah Johnson. We have the Community Development Committee, which is currently vacant in terms of the chair. And we also have in terms of the vice chairs, Councilwoman Deborah Johnson and Councilwoman Awet Yasu. We have Transportation and Environment Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Yasu and vice, the vice chair is, thank you, the vice chair is Councilwoman Laura Hopkins. We have the Marketing and Civic Innovation Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Ahmed Hassan, and the vice chair is vacant. And we have the Equity, Inclusion, and Opportunity, which is chaired by Laura Hopkins, and the vice chair is vacant. So at this time, I would like to have for each one of the positions to have the council members to discuss who would want to be the chair. And if there's anyone who may want to change that position, change to another committee, this will be the time to do that in terms of the selection. So we'll start with the Public Safety and Legal Committee. At this time, who would like to be chair of that committee? Do we want to keep it, keep it the same?
I'd like to chair it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Vice Mayor Yasu. Is there anyone else who would like to chair? Is anyone else? Is there anyone else?
I'd like to remain, I'd like to remain in the committee, but I'm fine with Awet chairing, of course.
And Councilwoman Johnson, would you like to serve as the vice chair? Or coach, okay. Okay, perfect. All right. Is there any other discussion related to this committee? Hearing none, we'll move to the Housing and Infrastructure Committee. And so chair, who would like to make sure in terms of position of chair? We have.
I would like to chair that one.
So and then we, Councilman Carol, you would like to also?
Can I remain as the co-chair as well?
Oh, no, oh, no, I'm sorry. Our vice, do I have to, I can vice chair that one. That's not the one I really wanted.
Okay, okay. So I can be the vice chair. Yes, okay, okay. So Councilman Carol would like to remain chair and Councilwoman Johnson would like to serve as vice chair. Is anyone else would like to take those positions? Or is there any other discussion as it relates to those positions?
I would be happy to stay on that committee just as a member, but not as chair or vice chair, as I am now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hopkins. Okay, is there, so we can proceed with the next committee? Is that fine with everyone? We'll move to the next committee, which is Community Development Committee. Who would like to chair this position?
I would, Deborah Johnson.
Councilwoman Johnson, would anyone else like to chair that position? Hearing none?
Not chair, but I would like to, I would like to remain on the committee though.
Okay, so you want to remain on the committee. Is there anyone else who'd like to serve as vice chair for that committee?
I could also serve as the vice chair.
Well, and the other piece is, just as a reminder, we do have the open seat that is up for election. So you know, that might be another opportunity for the person to get it by default. So, so don't feel so compelled.
I really would recommend probably we, I think it's okay if we discuss this, but in that light, but maybe we should put this on the next month's agenda instead. Because I mean, I don't know if there is any, we can still continue having meetings. But like you said, we're gonna have a new council member next month. So maybe we should just wait for the other person.
That's, that's one way to handle it. What is the discretion of the council in terms of, do we want to proceed and allow the other person just to fill those vacancies of a chair and a vice chair? Or how would you like to do it?
I feel like, Madam Mayor, that we should proceed because the seat won't be filled by the next meeting, by the February meeting. The election's not until March, it won't get sworn in until after that. So just to have some continuity, I'd prefer to go ahead with this and then we can rearrange as necessary according to the wishes of the person elected.
And I would second that.
All right, well, we'll proceed. Okay, so we have Councilwoman Johnson to serve as the chair, and we have the vacancy of the vice mayor, vice chair seat. So there's no other discussion. And we have Councilman Yasu to serve on that committee, right? Okay, we'll move to Transportation and Environment Committee. So we have Councilman Yasu to serve as chair. So you want to still serve as chair of that? Or you want to serve as chair of the Public Safety? Which one?
I mean, I don't really mind chairing both, but if we have to pick one, I would be okay. But I would like to stay in that, in the Environment Committee.
Okay, you want to stay on the Environment Committee? Okay, let me ask this question. Go ahead, Councilman.
So what I'm thinking is, is since we don't have one person, maybe we can leave that. I don't know, because I'm really, that's what had this thing is, we can leave it blank, or we could continue until the next month's meeting. At least for one of the committees, maybe we should leave it. I don't know if that's the case.
Well, since, let's do it this way. For Councilman Yasu, and typically what happens is, there are six committees. And so each council member serves as a chair of that committee. So right now, we have you as the Public Safety, and we have in terms of a vacancy, the vacancy for, it would be for this chair position. So let's do this, let's make it vacant for the chair position. And you're the, you can be the vice chair if you like, because I don't think you're a vice chair.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, all right. And so you can be the vice chair. And Councilwoman Hopkins, would you like to remain on that committee?
I would. I was gonna suggest that Awet and I could co-chair that committee. It's fairly collaborative anyway, I believe.
Okay, okay. And then, is there any other discussion as it relates to this committee? Okay, the next one is the Marketing and Civic Innovation Committee. And we have as chair, Councilman Hassan. Is there any changes for that committee?
I would like to be on that committee.
I mean, Councilwoman Johnson, we'll have you on that committee. Anyone else? Okay. And then for the Equity, Inclusion, and Opportunity. Councilwoman Hopkins, would you like to be, remain chair for that?
I would like to remain as chair. I believe Councilwoman Johnson had also volunteered at one point to co-chair that. Is that?
That was correct.
Okay, okay, perfect, okay. So with that, we have chairs and the co-chairs for the committees. As mayor, I will sit on the Public Safety, the Equity and Inclusion, and the Housing.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other discussion from the council?
Nope.
Okay, perfect. Now, community, do you have any discussion on this agenda item? Hearing none, we will proceed to the next agenda item, which will be E2. It is the conditional use permit request for the property located at 1051 Montreal Road, Suites B and C. Mr. Gomez.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request from a business owner for a conditionary use permit to allow for a laundry service or a coin laundromat at 1051 Montreal Road, Suites B and C, located adjacent to the Exxon gas station across the street from the Avalon and Montreal apartment complex, next and in between the Clarkston Station Apartments entrance and the Georgia Piedmont Technical College building. The Planning and Zoning Board held the, at their meeting last week, recommended approval to conditionally approve this conditional use permit to allow for the coin laundromat to be located at this site. To refresh the memory, the council made a change earlier toward the latter part of 2020, making a change in the city zoning code to allow for laundromats in this zoning district. So the applicant met all the, I guess, there are conditions, excuse me, that the Planning and Zoning Board has recommended or listed on your screen, including that the business will only be limited to operate as a coin laundromat, no long-term overnight parking. They'll adhere to the city's codes to ensure that there is no disorderly conduct and limit the noise. Again, no noise vibrations, et cetera, would be a nuisance. They must meet all the regulatory requirements under DNR and EPDs related to the operation of a coin laundromat. And again, they'll meet all of our city codes in terms of the plan review, building permits, business licensing, or business registration, occupational tax certificate. Their hours of operation, that they will be open 6:00 a.m. till 11:00 p.m., seven days a week. Ms. Cowie, anything else to add, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. No, Madam Mayor, the, there are 28 parking spaces at this location. With the suite square footage of 2,400, the applicant is required to maintain five spaces for this business. There are currently nine front spaces, 13 on the side. Six are under the canopy, which is a total of 28 spaces. The gas station is required to maintain 11 of those spaces because the suite is 2,200 square feet. The 2,400 square feet for the proposed coin laundromat is five spaces. Madam Mayor and City Council, Mr. Khatak is actually in attendance. If you have any additional questions for him.
Thank you, Ms. Cowie. Mr. Khatak, would you like to say something?
Well, first of all, I would like to say hello to all of you. You know, it's sad that it's COVID times and we're having to do this, you know, over Zoom. Otherwise, it would have been really, you know, preservable to really meet you guys in person. So, yeah, I mean, you know, we went through the, through the planning and zoning meeting last week and discussed this thoroughly and, you know, with certain conditions, just like Ms. Cowie just explained, you know, in place, you know, they went ahead and gave me a green light that said, okay, you know, as long as you abide by these few things, you know, you're okay to open a laundromat. So I'm hoping to actually, any questions you guys have. And I'm really thankful to you guys for making an arrangement, even, even, you know, entertaining this idea, if you will.
Thank you so much. And at this time, does the council have any questions for the applicant?
Well, Madam Mayor, I have a general question. I don't know if this is for Ms. Cowie or this gentleman, but I'm concerned with the creek being in between the locate, well, right off the location, the runoff is, did we say that the runoff would not affect our natural stream? Because of the toxins?
Staff did make, Councilwoman Johnson, Shawana Cowie, staff did contact the Department of Natural Resources in EPD and asked them about any other requirements of, that is required of the laundromat environmentally. There are no special permits for environmental issues around a laundromat. It is only to maintain the dryers, and that comes from the land and the continual use. And Mr. Khatak during the meeting did state that his maintenance would be, if not every day, every other day for the dryers to be cleaned and his attendant will properly make sure of that.
Okay.
This is Robin, I guess, Councilwoman, were you asking for, because in terms of perhaps a laundry service, I mean, excuse me, a dry cleaning type service? Or just the, the actual usage, for example, of the washing machines and the water being?
Right, both of them. I didn't know if they were gonna have a catered laundry, dry cleaning as well as the machines, but I was concerned about the laundry detergent and Clorox draining into the soil next to the creek, that type of thing.
Well, I mean, Shawana and, and the applicant can also add, but I don't believe there's any dry cleaning services that will be taking place on site. And also, the, the draining of the water used in the machines must meet and comply, as was stated, the regulatory requirements, but it will go into the sanitary sewer, correct?
That is correct. Again, as. For environmental permits. And that would, that's the question, conversation that the administrator had at EPD with myself, was that there is no regulation for this type of coin laundromat. This is not an industrial processing plant that would have to go through the detailed permitting process. This is a coin laundromat. And again, as I stated earlier, that the maintenance of the dryers would be the requirement for this location. Of course, there could be some environmental recommendations that could be made for eco-friendly, but that is not, that is not a requirement according to EPD.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I, I got a quick question in this, which is kind of tagging on that similar comment. So I just, so I'm wondering if the owner is considering machines that actually would save water usage. I just, I'm not sure. I would like to hear from the property owner if there is anything like that anyway. But if there is, I really would strongly encourage them to use. They would save money on the water anyway, and that would save water for the environment. And it definitely is a saver for the business owner as well. So I'm just wondering.
Yeah, so I would like to speak to that. Mr. Yasu, very good point there. I'm glad you brought that up, because any of the new laundromats that are being opened, pretty much anywhere, most of the manufacturers actually have these energy efficient, you know, washers and dryers. So they're energy efficient in a sense that the, the electric part of it, they actually function, you know, well, and actually better than their predecessors, if you will, like older generation of the washer and dryers, while using less electricity. So that actually takes care of as far as the electricity part of it. But as far as the water side, the water part of it, a lot of these washers are also water conservation type, you know, washers, if you will. They're actually engineered to, to function well with lesser amount of water. So in a way, without getting too technical, in the nutshell, I like to say this. So when a customer comes in and they, and they drop their clothing load into a washer, a lot of these washers are actually equipped with, with the mechanism that sort of weighs out their load. And based on that, it actually delivers the amount of water. So it's not just one standard, you know, amount of water that each washer is just like, say, for example, if it's gonna take, you know, 10 gallons to do one load, and no matter what size load you put in there, you know, that is just always going to use 10 gallons. It doesn't really do that. You know, a lot of these washers are real smart, especially now, the new ones that are, they're coming out. And, you know, they use the water effectively. Now, the other thing, I would like to get back to the, to the other point that I think this other lady made earlier, sorry, I forgot name. Yeah, yeah, about the, about the sewer, the water going to the sewer system. So in any of the, in any of the coin laundromats, you know how, just in, in restaurants, they're actually required to have the grease traps? So coin laundromats are required to have something called a lint trap. That is something that we, that we construct as part of the laundromat, and it's always built underground, either in the front or towards the back of it, whichever site is close to the sewer system. So it serves, it serves a function of a filter per se. So all the water that comes out of the washers, use water, it actually goes into, it actually goes through that filter into the, you know, into this trap. And then from there, it gets filtered out before it hits the sewer system, if you will.
Oh, thank you.
There was a question, first, are there any other questions from the council? Okay, there was a question I saw in the chat as it relates to the, the number of machines versus the amount of parking. And I know in terms of that area, there are lots of apartment complexes. And I want to just make sure with the applicant, was the expectation that you'd have more foot traffic versus people driving? I think that's something we want to just make sure in terms of discussing that point. And that's for the.
So to be honest to you, due to the proximity of the, of the business to the customers, I mean, we literally have, I mean, all of you guys are familiar with that location, right? So right across the street, we have apartment complex. And then not just one, but we have two or three or four, you know. And so it's, so it's very likely that we will have some foot traffic. And that will be the folks that currently do not own any vehicles for, for their own transportation. They have to catch a ride with a friend or relative to go to the nearest laundry, which is really not a walkable distance, you know. So this, so having a laundromat in this space is actually gonna be an added convenience for those folks. So they're actually gonna be able to literally walk across the street and take care of their laundry.
I do have a question. It's not entirely relevant, but I'm just curious. Do you live in Clarkston by any chance, Mr. Khatak?
No, ma'am, I don't. I live in Goodland County.
Okay, but you have, from your letter, you have experience with other laundromats? You own other laundromats?
That's correct.
I just want to throw in there that based on the location and the fact that it is surrounded by apartments, I think this would probably be bringing a much needed service to the area, which is why we changed the city code to make it a conditional use. Because for some reason, I don't know how we got this far without having a legal zoning code for laundromats in Clarkston. But definitely in that area, there's, there's a need. And I think it's a good idea.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if there are no other questions from the council, and we looked at the chat, are there any other questions from the public? Well, thank you again for submitting your application. And I know this was probably a much needed service in that community. And so we are, we are grateful that you are considering having a business in Clarkston. And so we will proceed with the vote next week, but thank you in advance.
Thank you very much, Bert, and all the council members.
Thank you for thinking of Clarkston, so thank you. We will move to the next agenda item, which is the mayor and council shall review a request for a shared or reduced parking agreement from Mr. Mekanin for a proposed retail development at 3884 East Postaleon Avenue with the current parking for a gas station located at 3874 East Postaleon Avenue. Mrs. Cowie, would you please review this topic?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. According to section 1108 of the City, the Code of Ordinance for the City of Clarkson, shared and reduced parking standards of the City of Clarkson, the mayor and city council shall review and discuss requests to reduce the parking requirement through a shared or reduced parking arrangement only through the permission. only through the permission of the mayor and city council. Mr. Henoch McConan, the owner of the properties located at thirty-eight seventy-four East Poste Leon, it's an existing gas station and three eight eight four East Poste Leon, is requesting to reduce the required number of parking spaces to construct a five thousand square foot retail development on the currently vacant lot located at three eight eight four East Poste Leon. The property owner is seeking to build a delicatessen inside a retail mart on the vacant lot, which will require twenty-four parking spaces. According to the submitted scale plan, the required number of spaces for a new existing buildings are thirty-six parking spaces. The applicant is requesting approval of a reduction in share parking agreement for thirty-three parking spaces. That will be for the contiguous properties of three eight seven four and three eight eight four East Poste Leon with a cross easement that will establish access to the parking spaces. Mister, yes, Madam Mayor, um Amy Ellie and uh Mr. Halsama is here representing the applicant. If you have any additional questions.
Ms. Calwee, and at this time, we'll let the applicant have the opportunity to speak. I think this Miss Amy, are you on the call?
Or Jim?
Good evening. This is Jim Halsama. Can you hear me?
That's Mr. Halsama. How are you today?
I'm well tonight. How are you tonight, tonight? Nice nice for you to have me. Uh this is a new experience for me to talk to people across town instead of having to drive all the way across town.
I know.
Nice. We should do this more often. Uh I'm I'm the architect for the applicant, and uh we want to build this proposed five thousand square foot retail facility. Um I don't believe we have requested a reduction in any of the parking counts based on the shared parking schedule available in the section eleven oh eight. Uh I I thought, and there is a shared parking schedule in exhibit C in our application that um I thought we were parking a hundred percent of required for the retail building and a hundred percent required for the gas station in in your shared parking schedule. The uh daytime on weekends requires a hundred percent parking for both uses, both the retail building and the gas station. We're just requesting to share, since we can't get all our parking required on the retail side, we're requesting to share some of the parking on the gas station site, since it has an abundance of uh area.
Ms. Calwee, just just for clarity, can you can you go back over in terms of that request of of the shared parking, just so we're all on the same page with it? Ms. Calwee, you're on mute.
Yes, according to section eleven oh eight, that section of the ordinance is for a shared and reduced parking standard. So it is both reduction and shared parking if you can't accommodate all parking on that one side. So you are sharing, as Mr. Um Halsama did explain, but the section is for shared and reduced parking standard. So of course, when we did the calculations, um the calculations for thirty-two spaces are recommended for the the minimum shared parking requirement, but of course, the applicants are going beyond that, which we are happy of. But of course, to have a shared parking agreement, mayor and city council must approve that agreement. And the development has not been constructed at this time. They wanted to make sure that they got this agreement taken care of before construction start.
Thank you, Ms. Calwee, for that clarification. And uh thank you to the applicant for waiting to get permission. So we definitely appreciate that, too. So from a council perspective, do you have any questions for the applicant at this time?
I just have a question about the development. I think you said like a retail space in Delcetessin. Can you kind of share some more detail on what it is you're planning to build?
It it is a retail market, and I believe in the five thousand square feet, there's eight hundred square feet uh assigned to a a small deli, sandwich shop. And we are complying with the parking requirement for restaurant use, although because there is no deli a parking requirement in the parking code. So I I thought we were over parking.
And then what is the other space gonna be? You said some was gonna be deli. What is the rest? Or do you know yet?
Retail.
Retail, like like clothing or?
The Yishy Mart wants to move uh two lots up to the west from where they are currently located. This will be this will be a new Yishy Mart with two with two vacant tenant spaces for retail tenants.
So so they they already have that uh Yishy Mart that is I I know.
Other site.
Yes, okay. So they're just expanding it to a larger area.
This will be a new building.
Okay, okay, okay. Good, good, good. Any questions, council? Yes, Councilwoman Hopkins.
So the the Yishy Mart is moving up the street a little bit?
Yes, ma'am.
It is moving up the street. It's not exactly the same site. So they would be both expanding their um floor footage and have more parking than they currently have, correct?
It's totally different site. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, definitely a need for that. Okay, all right. I'm just
Uh is this vacant is this vacant lot on the corner of East Ponce Mel?
It is a vacant lot, yes. It's in front of the access to the apartment project.
But it's not it's not at the corner of Mel and East Ponce. It's right next to the driveway entrance into Highland Village Apartments.
That's correct. That's a shared that's a shared driveway.
It's right next to the Marathon Gas Station, right before the two eighty-five northbound entrance.
Yes.
Correct.
Currently, it's just a vacant grass area and the the gas station sign is located at the front clo- close to East Ponce.
Yes, sir.
So is that gas station that's in the drawing? Is that the Marathon Gas Station?
Well, I think I believe it's the Sharon.
Okay.
Yes, that's right there on the corner before you get to two eighty-five.
Okay.
Exit.
That is the current site plan of that gas station.
The questions from the council? Thank you. Are there any questions from the public at this time?
Madam Mayor, we had three uh folks signed up to speak. Uh we'll start with Mr. Medford.
Mr. Medford.
Evening, council. Um I live within maybe two minutes at most walking distance from this. And I am absolutely thrilled to see a local business investing and growing in our area, especially on the side of town. It's a little bit of a hike to get downtown uh for food, and Yeshi crams a lot of cool stuff into a very small space. So uh seeing them uh growing like this and then also including the Delcetessin makes me very excited. Uh I am I I definitely agree with allowing for the whatever changes they have to make for parking. Um if we made accommodations for a used car lot on Brockett, uh we can make accommodations for parking here. So uh but this is a great spot for this area to have a brand new food market in place. Uh this will serve a lot of those apartments behind it and a lot of people back on Macon uh Bacon Jolly and uh across the street where I'm at. Um I'm thrilled to death to see it and uh hope the city approves whatever they need. Thank you.
Gomez, who's next?
Uh Mr. Marques.
Marques.
Yes, uh good evening. Uh so I was reading this and my question, or rather, my concern is that uh and I wish Mr. McConan was the call because I could just ask him directly. But I I kind of wondering about their opening hours and uh um based on what's happened in the past, I want to make sure that, you know, if this is going to be a certain kind of business, it's going to stay that kind of business. Um because, you know, it's it's just uh it's right, very close to me. Uh and I've had, uh I think most, you know, I had some some issues with the the Ponce for Lounge. They uh are much improved, but it took about a year to get there. Um and I definitely don't want any any such occurrence again. Uh so I have uh heard you know loud music and whatnot uh coming from that direction. I can't say for sure it's the Yishy Mart, but it seemed to be from there. Uh during the day, um sometimes fairly late at night, too. So uh I just want to make sure that, you know, given that the the zoning for this business is uh based on the fact that they're so close to a residential area uh that there's going to be some, you know, that they're not going to, the deli is not going to turn into a bar serving, you know, drinks until four AM or any first thing um that that there's going to be some kind of oversight uh as there hasn't been in the past. Because clearly, I'm I'm, you know, definitely happy that they're investing in the business and expanding and whatnot, but it's um I I would be concerned about the uh there will be, you know, some some enforcement of 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 the zoning and the the ordinances. So what happened in the past isn't allowed to happen again.
Thank you for sharing your concern. Ms. Calwee. Ms. Calwee, um in terms of the hours of operation for this business and the other question I also had to follow up with um uh Mr. Marques's concerns, um if we grant the shared parking, is that specifically to this business? And if if someone else were to move in that that business, they would then have to also request the shared parking, too?
Uh the shared parking is uh forever, perpetuity.
Yes, the the shared parking um goes with the location, the land. As Ms. Um Councilwoman Hopkins did, you know, she's aware of, it goes with the land.
Correct.
Terms of the hours of operation for that business?
Yes, in the rep and in reference to the hours of operation, um it's in our ordinance now that it's unlawful for any business to operate between the hours of two AM and six AM. So those are the hours of operation. I don't know um the owner's hours of operation right now, but we can make sure that the hours of operation do follow what we currently have for code. The other locations have special exceptions based on their uses.
And Mr. Gomez, what we had another person?
I'm sorry, Ms. Hood.
Ms. Hood.
My questions have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Councilman Carol. I don't know if the applicant wants to speak to Mr. Marques's concerns about it possibly being a bar, since he may have more knowledge about, you know, who's going to be inhabiting that space.
At this point in time, I I can't answer that question without consulting with the owner. I just I don't believe there's any intention at all to have any kind of a bar at that point, that location. He wants to relocate his existing retail service.
Yes, Councilman Carol, the the conversations that I've had with the um the realtor that's actually representing the property owner, there has been no discussions of having any kind of bar at that location, only the deli and the retail spaces.
Hi. Shawna, can I speak? This is Amy. I'm the realtor.
Oh, hello, Amy. Go ahead.
Hi, yes, um there's not going to be any bar or any alcohol to be sold in that location. Basically, we're just gonna move the current Yishy Mart to this new location, and they're gonna be serving the same soft drinks and, you know, water and things like that. But they they don't have any alcohol or they're not planning to have any bars or any anything like that at all.
Okay, and um no, no people loitering in the parking lot late at night, not playing their 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 music loud, because that's that happens. That's my concern. That's what I'm bringing you up.
I will I'll speak to the um owner personally and to make sure that that will not happen. Um I was not any, I was not aware of that at all about
I'm right behind, so yeah, I'm aware of it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um yeah, but we'll definitely make sure that will not happen again. And the hours of operation, I don't believe they're gonna plan to open after um eleven PM. I'm gonna double check on that and I'll let um Shawna know, but I think they're gonna be closing at eleven, six AM to eleven PM. It's gonna be the hours.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hopkins?
Um I am noticing on the drawing that the proposed parking is in back of the retail establishment. Is that correct? Rather than what would be more typically on the Ponce side?
I believe the parking requirement, parking ordinance right now prohibits parking between the street and the front of the building.
Oh, Calwee, I know you were also saying something.
Yeah, I was looking at the um rendering exhibit um C that Mr. Gomez did have up before. There was parking on the side of the building, um Ponce de Leon. Um the building will face Ponce, but it is as you go into the drive, there's parking on from around the rear and on the side, as you can see to the left and
Right.
the adjacent parking on um where the gas station is located.
We would prefer to park on the front. I believe the parking ordinance restricts it.
And the city and the city just finished putting in a brand new sidewalk and uh milling and resurfacing the road, so we will, we would not allow any parking on the front as the drawing rendering shows. So we're not going to tear up our brand new sidewalk.
Yeah, there is no parking on the front.
Well, the only mode of transportation that is in the front is a bicycle rack.
That's right.
Definitely promote bicycles.
There's another requirement in the parking ordinance.
Yes, that's correct.
Are there any other questions? Well, we'd like to thank our applicants for coming and giving us additional information about their request. Uh we look forward to the vote next week and hopefully uh we may also have the actual owner of the business to maybe join the call, too.
Madam Mayor, this is Robin. If I may, one final uh comment. Uh Miss Iyeli mentioned uh uh we are not aware, I'll check with police, but uh we will confirm. I am not aware of any noise complaints coming from Yeshi Mart that have, that doesn't mean they haven't happened, but I don't believe uh any have been reported to us. Again, I will confirm all the conversations that I've had with the business in the time I've been here. They have been very uh very responsive, very positively responding uh to even to various issues such as with trash, with parking, uh you know, having to move cars when the lot was jammed. Uh they've been very cooperative with the, when we installed the driveway uh next to Lulu's Package Store onto the driveway that that is on the rendering, but on the on the east side of the driveway entrance. So we've been very supportive, um excuse me, they've been very supportive, the owners of Yeshi Mart and their employees um every time that I've interacted with them, and I believe the the police as well. Um and we have no reason to believe that will not continue. Um so again, as was stated, no request or no mentioning of in the future uh submitting a request which the city would have to approve to allow for the sale of any beer, wine, or or anything like that. So a- again, we very good relationship with the owner, the property owner, the business owner, and the employees at Yeshi Mart.
Thank you for that additional information. So again, we are going to be very happy to proceed with this as an agenda item for next week. So we'll move on to item E four, and that is to the discussion of research on the possible city use of well water. Mr. Gomez.
Yes, uh Mayor, this is to an item that we've discussed before at these meetings, and I gave the last update back on in the October uh council meeting. And as I stated back then, we're still in the same uh process. uh, process, which is simply to, uh, to hire a firm that will provide us some more definitive whether we can, what can be done and what realistically can either be done at two locations at Forty Oaks, Nature Preserve, uh, or here at City Hall Annex. But as I stated at the October meeting, uh, realistically only for water for irrigation purposes as opposed to drinking water. Uh, at a minimum, just for us to meet the regulatory requirements to allow for potable usage, uh, anywhere out of any well located anywhere in the city. Um, it's just an expensive undertaking that I, that I'm not recommending. Uh, but certainly for irrigation, there is a possibility, but as I stated before, uh, we just haven't progressed with this, but we are going to look to hire a firm to give us much more, uh, details and processes and what can be done. Uh, again, at the first location at Forty Oaks that likely to be used for irrigation, that certainly the users of the, excuse me, global growers, uh, gardening area can use as well as, uh, folks from the public, but uh, adding for, for potable for drinking, that's a whole nother different, uh, process that just would be too expensive for us, uh, to consider.
And for the council, are there any discussion or questions? Mr. Vice Mayor Yasu?
Uh. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, um, Mr. Gomez for bringing this, uh, agenda item. Um, I just feel like, um, uh, we are already making up our minds saying that, uh, it's gonna be expensive before you are telling the council, what are the expenses for and how expensive? I mean, all I heard, e- even the, in the past is.
It's listed in the bottom, the regulatory costs alone are a minimum of fifteen thousand per year. Uh, that would include even not for the cost of installing a well. It's just, I, we, I mean, we can certainly have a consult, a, a firm, a consultant look at that, but that's listed on the bottom. Uh, I just, you know, with, we can certainly do that, but a- again, the, the, but the only way that we would be able to definitively determine that is to hire a firm to start looking at what that would be. That was my recommendation in October. We just haven't gotten around to doing that, but we will do that this, over the next month or et cetera, to get this moving forward.
So, Mr. Gomez, to that point, and wait a minute, Vice Mayor, to that point, Mr. Gomez, are you doing more of an RFP so we can have an understanding of what the costs for, for them to do the estimate? So that way from a council perspective, we can say go, no go?
No, this is, it's not an R, it's really just reaching out to engineering companies to start and also to water comp, you know, companies that do that install wells as to what that would, what those costs would be, but we need to determine where that could be, what the feasibility of it. Uh, and again, that's, that's something that we need an expert to be able to do. And that's, as I stated before, that's where we are right now.
Vice Mayor Yasu?
That, thank you again, Madam Mayor. A- and, and I sure, um, I think I just want to make it clear that we're not talking about um, re, uh, reconnecting a well with our water, uh, lines. Uh, I'm not talking none of that, so that has to be taken out of the equation. So all we're talking about is digging a well and use it for irrigation, obviously, plus if possible to allow residents, uh, on limited basis if they, uh, would like to get, uh, portable water. But that is something I, I, I'm pretty sure that is gonna have to have some process, I understand. But I really, uh, I really don't have anything at this point to say this is not a good idea or a bad idea because all I heard is that the regulatory process is gonna be expensive or, but how expensive? I mean, if it is fifteen thousand dollars a year and the benefits are outweigh the cost, there's no reason for the council not to do it. Um, a- and we could always, um, shut it off if we want, if the council says, okay, we don't want to pay this much money. We're just gonna use it for irrigation. So my point is, uh, we are arguing about something and we don't even know what the cost is gonna be. And I mean, or why is it that, um, a city cannot provide a well water to its residents? I don't see that, that, I don't, don't see that, uh, rationale, but if this, this is state law that says a city cannot provide a water well for people to take it portably, I mean, um, I called actually, uh, uh, several people on, uh, 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 who, for the state, um, uh, regulators and some of them, they kind of laughed at me and they're like, oh, this is something that is done in third world countries, but why not have water? I mean, there is nothing really third world about having water for, um, residents to take it portably. But, um, I really would like to see the exact expenses and the exact process. These are the requirements to have a well dug first, then these are the requirements to use it for, um, for portable, for people to drink it. So I really want a clear, um, so, uh, please, uh, uh, thank you again, Mr. Gomez, and please, uh, I really uh, would love to see the council forward, move forward and get the, the exact numbers and the process for getting this well dug. Or not.
We will do that, but again, this is, we still have to comply with all the regulatory requirements, just keep that, and that's fine. What you stated, but we do have, it's not as simple as digging a well and then having folks coming and taking the water. It's not that simple. But we will provide that and get that to you as soon as we can.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Vice Mary Yasu for bringing up your concerns. That's why we make sure it's on the agenda. That's why we are moving forward to make sure in terms of the estimate, so we can go from there in terms of a body to decide if we move forward with that. So again, thank you, Mr. Gomez, for making sure that this is an agenda item and so that the council is informed on next steps. Is that good? Okay, thank you. Uh, are there any other questions from the council? Or concerns? Mr. Gomez, are there any questions or concerns from the public?
We have one speaker, Mr. Medford.
Yes, Mr. Medford.
Yes, so some of you may remember, I've actually done a good bit of research on our city's, uh, water system, the classic version of it and this potential new one. Um, I am kind of growing concerned over some of the costs while I assume that just drilling the hole would be the largest amount. Um, that huge difference between potable and non-potable and cost per year is concerning. Um, the, and the concern I have all would be if we were to go with just making it a non-potable water source, people are still gonna drink it. I think from a legal standpoint, we would have to have our attorney look at what our exposure would be if someone were to get sick, um, or how we would be able to protect ourselves from being, uh, sued in case anything were to happen. Um, my guess is that lots of different signs, lots of different translations, lot, possibly locks on it. I don't know how you lock it, that, keep it up. Um, but I would hope that maybe there's a way that we could get, uh, we could offset some of this with grants possibly. I don't know if there are any sustainable water system grants that could help, um, uh, defray some of these costs, uh, because the time that people are gonna be interested isn't gonna be right now. It's going when we have another drought. So, uh, that's gonna be when people are gonna be looking for, keep their gardens green and things like that. As you, everybody knows, uh, gardening is a big thing here in Clarkston. Everybody likes to have a uh, a garden. So, uh, having a place to come fill up some jugs to keep your beans going is a good thing. Uh, but I, I'm going to trust the city to, uh, carefully weigh the costs and expenditures with how much it costs for us to get a gallon of water from the current Cab County Water System. It's just ROI, unfortunately. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, are there any other public comments? Karen, we will proceed with the next agenda item and thank you, Mr. Gomez. Um, it is item E five, which is update on the city's twenty twenty CARES Act Fund Coronavirus Relief Fund. Mr. Gomez?
Thank you, Mayor and Mayor and Council. I just wanted to mention there's a couple of errors in the page in front of you. One, the meeting date. Uh, second, there's a grammar, like a typo in the narrative under the need impact. And then third, and most importantly, in the actual listing of the categories, the payroll other category about three quarters of the way down in the listing of categories, that should be under the third or the, really the, the third dollar column, that should be zero. Uh, the hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-three cents is listed twice. The second one in the row that begins payroll dash other that a hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifteen and forty-three cents should be zero. The total at the bottom is correct, the one million four hundred thirty-four thousand three hundred ten dollars and eighty-four cents. So we received one million four hundred thirty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars in twenty twenty to provide a, a variety of services and goods related to the pandemic, to COVID nineteen. Uh, we created or the council approved, uh, the categories, the allocation back in August. Uh, that's the first dollar amount column under actual eight dash twenty dash twenty, uh, which is what we submitted to DeKalb County as we were required in the intergovernmental agreement with the county. We agreed that we would spend the money in these categories and that we would meet the requirements of the federal CARES Act. Uh, on the second column, the December one, twenty twenty is really an, an estimate of what we would be spending, I'm sorry, that was the amount, excuse me, the amount that we submitted uh, with the estimates as part of that intergovernmental agreement that I mentioned. The actual on August twentieth is what we had spent at that time. And then the third column is exactly what we ended up spending, uh, for those categories. Uh, as we, I think is just to, to refresh everyone, the council approved specific spending on a variety of items from COVID nineteen testing to wifi connectivity, to educational, uh, tutoring programs, uh, to food resources, uh, to the, uh, category related to, why am I missing the, the last category? Uh, but anyway, they're listed on the second page, uh, as to what the categories were listed. Um, but just to show again, back here in the columns, uh, what was spent, of course, the majority was spent on the rental assistance uh, listed as rental mortgage housing, uh, just over nine hundred thousand dollars. On the second page, I list some of the statistics where we provided a seven hundred and fifty-three payments for rental assistance to four hundred and ten residents. Uh, again, averaging just under twelve hundred dollars per payment to nineteen apartment complexes in Clarkston and fourteen additional properties. Uh, the next, uh, well, I'll just continue down the list. The utility assistance for seventy-two residents received a hundred and ten payments averaging just under two hundred and sixty dollars per payment, made four residents received mortgage assistance. Um, eight hundred and eighty-six, um. We had a separate category, excuse me, for the utility payment assistance listed. But the rental mortgage includes obviously number one and number three, the rental assistance and the mortgage assistance. Then the other, uh, categories that were added where I included some of the data was in food distribution, education, uh, and the wifi, the wifi connectivity, um, in addition to the COVID nineteen testing. Uh, just again, to refresh, we did provide eighty thousand dollars to Core for COVID testing and twenty thousand uh, to Ethne Health, uh, for the testing that they were doing, uh, in throughout twenty twenty. The food distribution number four, um, we alloc, we spent just over thirty-nine thousand, uh, again, to the three agencies listed there uh, for the various food distribution events that included providing gift cards, providing hot meals um, in summons and one in, to envision Atlanta, for example, it was for equipment that they utilize for their warehouse storage, uh, as well as the purchase of food that they were distributing uh, every week, not only to individuals, but to other agencies that were then delivering to folks in and around, uh, Clarkston. Positive Peering received, again, the, the funding that they received was all similar to what envisioned uh, for equipment and they were distributing anywhere from fifty to sixty boxes of food every week to a variety of properties here in Clarkston. Um, they part, they provided all of that from April all the way to early December. Under education, the ninety-six, over ninety-six thousand, again, to the four agencies where we provided uh, e- everywhere for anything or service, these organizations provided services from scholarships for folks to, their kids to go to preschool to after-school tutoring, to various learning programs, um, and then some, so some of the data is listed on there. The extended learning time to the, to the students, the scholarships, uh, for, again, the preschools that Clarkston First Baptist Academy provided at Amani Women's Center and the Early Learning Scholars. Also, some of the funding was for personal protective equipment, uh, as is listed for Clarkston First Baptist Academy. On the wifi, the wifi connectivity, again, just under twenty-seven thousand dollars that we provided to uh, twenty-three thousand five hundred approximately to CDF Action, they provided in, uh, the connectivity and, and the information and surveyed folks in the two, uh, complexes in English Oaks and Town, and Clarkston Townhomes. And they provided the connectivity and the equipment, including the fifteen laptops, uh, at those locations. Uh, we spent a little bit of the city to uh, add the, the wifi connectivity at the Clarkston Women's Club that did not have it, that is now available, and that included a a one-year prepay at the Clarkston Women's Club. So again, the majority of the funding, uh, to reiterate, went to the for the rental assistance. Um, we had about fifteen hundred, uh, residents inquire on rental assistance. Uh, we were not able to accommodate really probably about the last seventy-five, um, that did meet the requirements. There were quite a few who never followed, who did not follow up or, and probably about nearly a hundred who just did not have all the documentation, um, required. And then likely about five to six hundred that lived outside of our limits, uh, mainly at the lakes at Indian Creeks, Willow Branch. The, I forget the name of the complex on Memorial College Drive, uh, the, the bigger one out there, not Brandon Hill, but uh, before you get to Brandon Hill on the same side of the road and Christopher Woods, and then the other complexes, Clarkston Oaks on Northern Avenue. Um, we even had requests from Tucker, from Decatur residents, uh, for the rental assistance, so. We did spend all the money by, uh, December the eighteenth was the last payment that we made. Um, we, as back up in the listing by category for payroll, uh, the payroll, the hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifteen is what, at the last council work session meeting, I mentioned that's what the additional hazard pay that went to city employees from March sixteenth through December twentieth. Um, again, the second payroll dash other should be zero, um, we'll correct that. And then some other, of course, we spent, uh, funding on cleaning, personal protective equipment, uh, technology and equipment for the police department, we for, to make our, our city facilities touchless for um, you know, automated, uh, temperature machines, automated hand sanitizing, dispensing in the restrooms, automated hand, uh, you know, for soap and all the faucets are automated. And also we spent money to place automatic opening doors at both City Hall and City Hall Annex. Those are set to be installed here very, uh, hopefully within the next week. Uh, so all of the funding that we spent, uh, really was related and complied, uh, with the federal CARES Act. Happy to answer any questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Um, and again, I would like to first say thank you to DeKalb County for allowing us to have, uh, this allocation of funds for us to be able to specifically help the city of Clarkston's residents. So I, I always, when I do have the opportunity to talk to the commissioners, make sure that we, we appreciate the relationship and partnership that we have between the local municipality as well as our county elected officials. So I wanted to make sure, um, I said that piece. The other thing that I noticed, uh, Mr. Gomez, and maybe you can. The other thing that I noticed, Mr. Gomez, and maybe you can expound on this, is from the workforce development, I didn't see any detail.
Yeah, that, we did spend about fifty, just under fifty five hundred of friends of refugees. They reached out to a list of three hundred, I will. They provided two hundred and ninety one hours of reaching out for employment services to approximately one hundred and fifty five Clarkston residents for employment services and resources, just under fifty five hundred dollars that we provided to them.
And the other piece is that if going forward, I know that from businesses, we may be able to think of some other ways, if we have the opportunity to get some additional funding, to maybe use that funding or some of that funding towards our businesses, if we get that opportunity with any ongoing CARES Fund. Thank you for the information in the report, and at this time, I'd like to hear any comments or questions from the council. Vice Mayor Yasu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I certainly want to echo your, it's the same message that this was really, it wasn't really simple when DeKalb County actually, I mean, at first, they were not really willing to share the money, and we can't really complain about this now, it's too late. But I really hope that that the money was available sooner. We had only about three months left when we received the money, so. But yet, absolutely, I agree with you that we are definitely thankful for the county and the commissioners. And I want to thank Mr. Gomez, especially for the rental assistance program. But I really was surprised to see that there was some spent for workforce development, but I really wish it was robust. And it was something that hopefully could have helped those people who are trying to get help for rental assistance, get a better job and. But anyway, can't complain about the past now. But overall, I just want to say, I think this this was helpful to a lot of people. They, they, a lot of people could have been evicted, but I think the council was pretty effective in taking measures and using the money properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Yasu. Any other council members who'd like to make comments? Mr. Gomez, did you have any comments from the public?
No.
Well, again, thank you, and thank you to the staff for actually executing all of the funds and being able to utilize all the funds for our residents, so we definitely appreciate that. So we will move on to item E six, which is review, discuss, request from Core Community Organized Relief Effort for COVID nineteen testing and or vaccine funding. Mr. Gomez?
Mayor and council, we received, I believe, just as the mayor, I put a copy of the email request last week from Core, from Mr. Golden regarding any assistance that we may be able to provide for, again, testing and or the vaccine, that information is listed here in the item. And Mr. Golden and Ms. Harrow are on the call as well.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Mayor Burks, Mr. Gomez, and council members for having us. Just wanted to share the the quick overview of the accomplishments that have happened since the city of Clarkson funding. Mr. Gomez, I'll ask, is it possible for me to share my screen?
Yes. There you go, Mr. Golden, you're now a host.
All righty. Can you all see this okay? Perfect, so just want to let you all know, we are so thankful for the eighty thousand in funding that happened in two thousand and twenty to continue operations and partnership between Core, IRC, and Board of Health. I only have two slides here, so this should not take any more than a minute or two. Just as an overview, through this partnership and through the funding from city of Clarkson, we were able to operate sixty three testing days within city of Clarkson across eleven unique locations and test as of today thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty five individuals, which represents over one hundred percent of the population of Clarkson. We recognize that about forty percent of Clarkson are refugees. We do work with IRC and have a focus there, but this is open to the whole community of Clarkson. And we feel as this, we've we've got a good spread of the community, so we're very happy with these numbers. On average, just turns out, from the funding that was given to about six to seven dollars a test administration, looking back on those numbers. As of this past Monday, we actually partnered with Ethly Health, who is also a recipient of of city of Clarkson CARES funding and opened a vaccine site at Georgia State University in Clarkson. Over the last two days, we're able to do three hundred and forty two COVID nineteen vaccinations, which brings us to about eleven dollars a vaccine, if you want to break it down. Funding wise, we had major lines and actually had to turn people away, so we're we're happy, happy with this. On top of this, we've been assisting the cab board of health with translation for these individuals in Clarkson who may not be able to speak to a case investigator, and IRC has been supplementing this by giving over six hundred and fifty food boxes and four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in rental assistance as well. As we get into this vaccination phase, we want to build on the success and would like for operations to continue. Core has self-funded from the end date of December eighteenth through city funding until until today, in hopes of receiving funding to continue on February into two thousand and twenty one. Cost for continuation for a month for a mobile testing unit, our cost is actually down from eighty thousand to forty thousand dollars. We have partnered with a laboratory where we can do insurance-based testing to collect reimbursements. So we'd like to propose testing at forty thousand for a month rather than the eighty. On top of this, through vaccination units, through a continual partnership with Ethne, we are able to offer a vaccination unit at at sixty two thousand dollars for a month. Capacity for that, six thousand vaccines in a month. We are talks with a medical provider where through insurance reimbursement, it would fully cover the cost of vaccination. So expect in the next week or so to be able to come to you all and say that we can offer these COVID vaccination units for free. So please consider that as part of a budget, but we're able to vaccinate about eleven dollars a vaccine, and the reimbursement rate now is seventeen dollars. Core would not collect any profits on top of the eleven, but we estimate to be able to offer it for free. So that that's a quick update of what we done in the funding request as well. Thank you all for your consideration. We hope to continue working in Clarkson.
Madam Mayor, I don't know if anyone else can hear you, but I cannot hear anything.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I have to move up, sorry about that. Thank you again for the wonderful partnership with Core. We we are very appreciative of having testing so close within our community. And so, you know, we we've worked on the COVID Task Force, and part of it is to mitigate the spread, and also when we can find out and provide those opportunities. So I definitely want to thank you guys for doing an outstanding job in terms of providing tests and testing our residents. And so just out of curiosity, when you're doing those tests, do you get the zip code level for for the the test recipients?
Yeah, so currently, we're working directly with DeKalb Board of Health with their test kits. It all goes into the state system, so zip code level down to address is is logged for every patient, so they can investigate. We could receive that by making a request to the cab board of health and to the state.
For the council, are there any comments at this time or questions?
This Councilman Carol, I guess one question I have is, I don't know if forty thousand per month fits in the council budget, but are there any alternate sources of funding where if the council were to contribute maybe a partial amount of that, that you could continue testing, maybe less amounts per month, or maybe get another source of funding that'll allow you to continue at the same at the same rate?
Yeah, great question. You have to be honest, since we ended the previous eighty thousand agreement on the eighteenth, we're set to demobilize on January first. Core, we found, we, Core's offered up its own funding to continue us through January, and we have been pressing hard, asking commissioners, asking the cab board of health for continued funding, similar to agreements that we have in in other counties. It has not come through yet, so I'm a little less optimistic than I had been. The full intention was to find funding in in January for this to continue, not to need to make this request. But we will always keep asking, and if there is partial funding available through the city, that may make it easier for a commissioner's office or the Board of Health to to supplement the rest because it shows buy-in.
And just to be clear, so you think you will have the vaccines funded from another source, so you don't, you're not, at least today, you don't think you need the vaccine funding, but you're just mainly asking for the testing funding?
Mainly, mainly, mainly the testing, that's correct. Wanted to share those numbers for vaccines in case this doesn't come through. I can follow up with Mr. Gomez by the end of this week to let him know if the vaccine funding agreement will come through.
Vice Mayor Yasu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I certainly want to thank the all the organizations and particularly Core, IRC, and their partners for the work that they've been doing. I have the same concern as Councilmember Carol said, that I mean, for the city, I think it's going to be pretty much and 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 I understand the importance of it, but I think the number is a bit high, forty thousand dollars per month, and I definitely respect and understand that 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 they have all the overheads. But I really would strongly encourage them, I mean, the new administration is pretty pretty receptive when it comes to testing and vaccines, so I really would hope that there will be a bigger partner than the city of Clarkson, because we really have very limited resources. And and last year, we were lucky to have the COVID relief funding, and we definitely, I'm glad we also were able to help a little bit. I know it wasn't enough as well, but but on this year, I really have concerns, especially this is going to come out of our general budget, and it wasn't part of the budget. So I really have concern that it could be beyond our means, but thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, you know, that's such a such a good point. We we fully understand that it comes from that national level to state to county to city flow. So as much as anything, you know, we ask you all to, you know, if that CARES Act does get released in higher amounts with with monies towards COVID testing, to think of us in that process, because whenever that does come, if funding can't come now, we'll be ready to ready to jump and help the city of Clarkson as best as we can.
Councilwoman Hopkins?
I have a question about what part of the process that Core is actually providing? If the healthcare providers are doing the actual vaccinations or the testing, like Ethne Health, then what part of the service is Core doing?
Yeah, good question. So for testing, we do it all start to finish. We do the intake registration as well as the the swabbing as well. Core is not a medical organization, we're crisis mitigation, so we don't have clinicians or clinical liability to provide the the actual injections. So that's where, you know, these last couple of weeks, we partnered with Ethne Health, where we'll do everything up to the point of injection, and then a clinical provider who Core would partner with would do the injection aspect.
Gomez, are there any comments from the public or anyone signed up?
Oh, no one signed up.
Well, yes, thank you again, and again, I can't emphasize, I've been out there when you've done some of the testing, and we definitely appreciate everything that you are doing to help our community know what their status is. So thank you again, thank you, Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mayor Burks, and all for your time.
Thank you.
Move on to item E seven, which is discuss, encourage plant options on food menus and all city events. And this is Councilman Yasu and Carol.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I I think this is just pretty self-explanatory. The idea is to encourage businesses and residents to incorporate more plants, options, or vegetarian options on their menu, and to also mandate, I know we're not going to have a lot of events, but in the future, whenever we have any city events, whether it is city council meeting or any event that is hosted by the city, we really want to mandate that we want to lead by example, so we want to make sure we have more plant options always. And I I don't think this would be, we just want to increase the options. And this is not to to say you can't serve this, or you can't serve, I mean, as long as there's more plant options, that's that's what that will do it, but that's for city events. But for the businesses, of course, we just want to encourage them because, first of all, everybody knows that it's good for your health, but it could be also good for business, because it was, this would attract more people to their doors. And so it's it's all, the the idea of this resolution is, number one, to encourage businesses, and also to encourage our residents. And we have a very peculiar resident, I mean, population of residents, because we have people from all over the world, which means we have, we definitely could use more options of different foods of varieties that come from different parts of the world. And if you go to Yeshe, we're just talking about Yeshe earlier, you would see different products that come from Ethiopia, and people go there, buy these products. And so this, the idea is to make sure that we want to encourage them and continue if they're offering more plant options. But if they're not, we want to encourage them, we're not going to force them, of course. But I think it would be great for their business, it would be great for our residents, and also for the consumers. And but but this, we've been talking about this for a while now, but at least especially when it comes to council meetings, we have pretty much half of the council is incorporating more vegetarian and pescatarian, and we have our mayor who is pescatarian or flexitarian, I'm not sure.
Flexitarians.
And yeah, me and Councilmember Hopkins as well, and I know the other council members are also passionate about this. But thank you, is there anything you want to add, Councilmember Carol?
No, I think you covered it, thanks.
Thank you both for your your concern in being healthy, making sure we have healthy options. So are there any other comments from the council at this time? Nope, okay. Are there any comments from the public, Mr. Gomez?
None registered.
So thank you again, and thank you for bringing it up to our attention. And so we will make sure we keep that in mind for next week. So we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is item E eight, and it is the proclamation for Black History Month, and that would be me. So I just wanted to make sure in terms of the actual proclamation that we do do awareness each month. So I want to make sure in terms of recognizing, we did MLK last month, we were doing Black History Month this month, and just making sure that people know the origins of black history and that. and that it actually started in terms of Cardigi Woodson, and when he started the actual program that evolved from um, Black History Week to being Black History Month, and making sure that we recognize the accomplishments of African Americans in terms of what they've done within our community. And so it's also historic, because this year marks the first year that we've had a woman to be elected vice, vice president, who is of African American as well as of Asian descent, and so we just wanna make sure in terms of recognizing Black History Month, that we do it from, with a proclamation. And so is there any other comments from the council? Okay, any comments from the public, Mr. Gomez?
None registered, Madam Mayor.
All right, well, thank you very much, and we will move on to item E nine, which is to discuss an adoption of resolution to refer to the Housing Committee to make policy recommendations for affordable housing solutions and develop a process for the Housing Trust Fund, and that is uh, the mayor, Bailey Burks, and uh Councilwoman Johnson, and so we, in the past, we've had, we've talked about and had some housing um policies, but we really haven't acted in terms of moving forward with policies. So one of the things is to actually make sure in terms of looking at policies, looking at making sure that we have procedures for the Housing Trust Fund, that we allow the Housing Committee to go forward with that, and then as part of it, to also see if the Housing Committee could go forward and move and have a affordable housing summit, so that we can get all the stakeholders um to provide input feedback, so that we can have a robust um hous- affordable housing solution. It is something that is very important to all the residents, as we've seen many of our neighboring cities um have higher increases in terms of housing costs, and we've seen that with some of our own development, and so it's making sure that we have that balance between allowing people to be able to move from apartments into housing in Clarkston, um, so that we can have a people to continue to stay within our community. And so Councilman, Councilwoman Johnson, would you like to add anything else to that?
No, ma'am, you um took care of everything.
Councilmembers, did you have anything else to say or add to it? Yes, Ca- uh Vice Mayor Yasu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, I definitely agree with this, um, uh, with this proposal. But we already, the city council paid ten thousand dollars to a firm to do this exact study, and um, uh, I think it would be easy first of all, because we already have the document uh in our hands, and I think we could start with that and um, uh, or if you, I mean, if you want to send it to the committee, that's fine as well, but I really honestly don't see much that the committee can do, because they already have a document that, 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 that actually, we had several meetings, um, and I remember when we did it about three, four years ago, and uh, the, the, the firm did give us their recommendation. So we have something to work on, so we could easily either adapt portions of this, instead of doing another study or trying to, I mean, uh, so we, we just don't have to reinvent the wheel, we already have the document, so I, what I'm, what my, my, my recommendation would be to go ahead and um, see if the committee would uh, would like to adopt the entire recommendation or parts of the recommendation itself.
And thank you, um, uh, Councilman Yasu, and that part of it is, is that we did do that information, and it just kinda set, set on the shelf. And so making sure that we move forward with it, and so moving forward with it is having um the committee, where we have the Housing Committee to go ahead and take the additional time to look at the documents, uh, make sure they work with our legal department, uh, making sure that um what we can do, we actually can still do. And then also make sure that we can follow up in terms of having that open discussion with the residents to get any additional input that we need from it. So I definitely leverage what we have um as a base, but then also see if we can do additional work with that. Does it make sense? Does that work? Okay, uh, any other questions or concerns from the council? Yes, Councilman Carol?
The one thing I would say is I think part of this will go hand in hand with the zoning reform, is that I think the Housing Committee should be active in that area and, you know, have recommendations as we go through the reform process, but the other thing I would say is kinda separate from that is we may wanna think of making a priority of what to do with the Housing Trust Fund, because that is money, you know, is, is sitting there, we have, it has been replenished since it was used for rental assistance uh previously last year, so we may wanna make that a priority, kind of deciding, you know, what to do with that, just because obviously if it's sitting there, it's not helping anyone with affordable housing, so it's better, I think, to do something with it than nothing.
Yes, I was just gonna add that that's one of the reasons for the policies and procedures being put in place, so that we can come up with an idea to initiate some of these funds, um, encourage, um, take and become homeowners, maybe create, and we get like a grant or however we wanna do, if that's one thing that we needed to do, was to start to implement something so that we would have some structure in place, opposed to just sitting on the ideas that um Vice Mayor Wa- um, Awek mentioned, and as well as sitting on the money.
Mr. Gomez, are there any comments from the public?
None registered, Madam Mayor.
And so, um, thank you again for the comments from the council. Um, the next item is E ten, which is a discussion on possible future annexations. Mr. Gomez?
Mayor and council, this item, sort of an annual uh update on annexation and what's uh been happening, which really, uh, nothing new other than updating uh, the data that I included uh in the agenda item, uh, and really a little bit of a history from the time I've been here regarding annexation and the meetings. Um, and I think the count, those that were in the council last year, um, I think all of you were, and uh, and even the mayor attended the meetings where annexation discussions occurred. Uh, we really, as I stated, the only change has been some of the data that's on here, um, and specific to the two areas that the city adopted several years ago in terms of possible or future uh annexation, particularly after the annexations that occurred in fourteen and fifteen. So specific, again, the data is listed specific to areas three and four. Uh, there is, uh, the map is included further down in the um agenda item, and that's the data that's included uh with this item, but really just to provide an update, and again, the, looking at the financial, uh, what our expenses would be for the additional personnel and equipment versus what the potential revenue would be, um, based on the list of all the taxes that are, um, that are listed. Um, but also just some additional of data in terms of, um, what if those two areas would be annexed, what that might look like in terms of, again, you can see additional uh, police, public works, code compliance, administrative, and just the expenses related uh, to all of that. Uh, wanted to, to note, I think as most of you are aware, those two areas do include uh, as I listed, the tax exempt properties, uh, in which most of their, for lack of a better term, sort of self-sufficient. Um, they provide really their own policing, public safety, maintenance, et cetera, um, and that comprises approximately a quarter of those two areas. Also to add, at last year's of meet, initial meeting in January, uh, followed by a, a meeting just on annexation toward the end of January, about a year ago, uh, there were the, the, those in attendance, uh, included primarily single-family resident, uh, residents that reside in single-family homes, um, and those that, the majority that spoke, spoke against their property, their area, um, being annexed, and so certainly anything that the council would wanna consider going forward, um, it, it can certainly include, um, whether to attempt to annex both areas or only, or carve out certain areas. Um, also, there, there's a component of how we communicate with uh residents, with businesses, et cetera, um, that would be part of this, but in order to uh, in order for a city to proceed, we would need direction as to whether this is even something whether this year or next year or two years down the road, um, but this is really, as I stated, just the annual update and some updated information, particularly the financial information as to where we are. Um, we have not surveyed every single parcel or every, or rather every occupied parcel, but as I stated, we did receive some feedback last year, um, I, I don't imagine that some of those residents, uh, you know, they may have changed their mind, but just anecdotal conversations that I've had over the past year, uh, real- realistically, a lot of the single-family residents are content with, um, where they are and their local government. Whereas residents in, in the approximately nineteen apartment co- multifamily properties, apartment complexes and townhomes, th- there is a, a sizable, I mean, just as I said anecdotally, I've probably, I've spoken with dozens of residents, probably approaching a hundred, who most already believed they were in the City of Clarkston, they were surprised that they were not. Um, and certainly a lot of the conversations I held with a lot of the folks who applied for the rental or utility assistance, um, they, you know, they did not object to being, eventually being in the city, um, however, they, you know, explained to them that a little bit of the process and that if the city ever proceeded with attempting to annex an entire area, it would take an legislative act by the state, uh, followed by a vote of resident, of registered voters within those areas. Um, but certainly there, there's a lot of support for, for apartment residents, um, versus what would have not much of a support for the residential, single-family residential areas. Of other things uh to consider as well, um, the any decision going forward on whether, also, I'm sorry, the annexation could take a different form, it can be also parcel by parcel, um, by owners, of course, that would take a, a lot longer time. Um, we're not going to force annexation on anyone, um, at least that's been my understanding from council the years, the two years that I've been here, uh, but certainly this can take a variety of different directions, uh, or, or no direction. Uh, really just bringing this up for discussion, and I, if I was looking to place this on for a little bit more detailed discussion at the, at our annual retreat, again, just to gauge any, any direction as to how to proceed, um, with this topic. I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Um, a quick question, when I'm looking at the expenses, and I'm looking at the people, where do you envision or how would we handle in terms of space for the people?
Well, realistically, the reason the police is much higher is because the cost, um, be- if you were to take, you know, one point six five million divided by eleven, it's, it's a sizable of amount, that would include un- until such time as, as the city, as we determine uh how to proceed with, in that, i- i- what eventually may be a new police public safety building, um, which could be part of the next uh wave of SPOST funding, again, but that would not be for several years. At, for police, that we would have to find a location likely in, in the southern, in one of those two areas. Essentially, a, a police substation that would be a temporary for, you know, anywhere from likely two years to as much as probably three or four, um, depending on when the annexation would occur, and that would be, so that would be take care of police, public works. Uh, we have, we would accommodate them at the current um location and the code compliance officer um here in, at City Hall Annex, as well as the administrative coordinator, if not here at City Hall, um, over at, excuse me, at City Hall, uh, between City Hall and City Hall Annex. Uh, one other possibility would be to house um those two positions or uh, our entire code compliance that, although not necessarily designed for it, um, the cost would be very, very minimal to utilize the women's club, uh, in the future for additional city offices. Uh, of course, this also would inclu- you know, it would incorporate discussions of, of a new city hall into the future, but again, I my perspective, and as the manager would be really to look at a, at a new police public safety um, building in the future before we were to proceed with a city hall.
And then my other question is, uh, with this annexation area, are we'd have to do some coordination probably with DeKalb County if we were to look at it for uh Brandon Hill, um, since that is still, it, in terms of them addressing that, and I know some discussion was, was brought up about utilizing land trust and other things like that, um, do you have any more details in terms of how are with, how the city might consider pursuing that?
Well, we would have to have discussions with the county, and the ca- I mean, the county would, I mean, need to be somewhat have a, approve the fact, well, not necessarily approve, but obviously th- they would have to be a big part of this w- and as to how we, if we proceed with this, but yeah, it wouldn't obviously involve them, and there, I haven't had any discussions with the county. Um, last year, the sentiment was that the county was not did not appear overly supportive of giving up, and the study that was done by the University of Georgia really focused mainly on the loss of revenue to the county by cities annexing unincorporated uh areas, um, and as a matter of fact, the City of Brookhaven was involved in, in an issue with the county regarding some of their annexation, so, but yeah, it would have to involve the county and um, not sure what their plans are, but I'm, I'm going to safely infer they, they're not overly supportive of losing the revenue. Um, however, you know, the two years I've been here, I will tell you, these areas, other than, I mean, Brandon Hill is the one where the county has been the most involved on a code issue, and then acquiring or taking certain properties, certain ind- yeah, individual units, because they're all individually owned, to then eventually demolish structures that have been condemned, uh, so they've been involved really there, but in terms of the rest of the areas, the service level for the county is, I mean, i- it, it's less than what we provide, and we've gone into some of these areas to provide services and assistance, um, but i- it's just a little bit of a different level. Um, when you look, uh, just even visually, when you're walking down North Indian Creek, when you're driving on some of the streets such as Jolly Avenue from the city line down to Indian Creek Way, uh, so i- it's clearly the county has to be involved in the discussion, um, but again, whether they're supportive or not, or not remains to be seen.
Yes, cuz I know that area is also of, on the Memorial Drive, the Memorial Drive overlay, the, the business overlay. So, um, that's just something that down the road, we can think about, but um, I know there was some question, I looked down there, someone was asking, the expenses, I see are two million sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the revenue is two million seventy thousand two hundred and seventy-one. So I just wanted to make sure I saw someone ask that comment. Council, do you have any comments or questions at this time? Yes, uh Vice Mayor Yasu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think this is really, um, something, uh, that, that that in the long run would benefit our city. Um, number one, we need to have a, um, developable land, I mean, uh, when you think about it, Brandon Hill sounds a pretty bad area, but if you think about the potential though, there's still a potential is in there, I mean, this is, um, I mean, this is right next to the college, and um, uh, I, I do understand there are a lot of issues, but I'm just saying, I think that could be also an opportunity uh, for the city in the future, that, that could be a natural expansion for, for, for developable prop, land, plus, um, for 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 developable prop land plus um uh we could definitely um uh revitalize that area. Uh and I I I just, I was at the meeting uh about a year and a half or a year ago at the uh at the uh the Capitol and um I do remember seeing the report, I mean, the county is gonna lose very negligible amount of money. I don't think they really, especially our city, the 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 in the addition of area three and four two from the Cab County is gonna be a drop in the bucket from the county. I mean, the even in including Green Haven, all of that was about two percent decrease. And now we're talking about only a fraction of that, this probably a drop in the bucket. So I don't think the county would be um adamantly opposed to to this. Uh of course, they would not like to see uh more uh more of there. But the county is still gonna remain, I mean, they're not gonna really lose us per se, we're still gonna have a commissioner for uh for that district. Um the only difference will be that the revenues and and taxes, but they are gonna also not gonna have the services. So in at the end of the day, I think it all uh matched up for the county and for the city as well. So I think I'm not in support of going outside the ci- three zero zero two one zip code. But I think making the three zero zero two one, all of it as part of the city would be uh beneficial in the long run. Um that's just my comment. I think we should go ahead and um uh see if we can get this added to the to the agenda for the for the uh our legislators to do it. If if we can put it on November, that'll be great. But that's just mine. Thanks.
Thank you, uh Vice Mayor Yasu. Any other cons- coun- council comments? Yes, Councilwoman Hopkins. I can't hear you, you're on mute. There we go.
There we go. I have talked to some residents, um current residents of Clarkston and then people in these proposed areas that are less vehemently opposed to annexation than others. I have yet to have uh any resident of the current city of Clarkston reach out to me to say I really want to annex these areas or have anybody in these areas going, I really, really want to be annexed in. So at a certain point, I think it has to come into the conversation who we would be serving by annexing them and do they have the perception of being served by us annexing this area? Like, what is the benefit to the current city residents? And um I think last time when it was discussed, of course, that was my inaugural meeting, so I didn't have a lot to say about it. But there were people speaking pretty strongly um that are within the city of Clarkston that said, no one asked us. Like, they would have to do a referendum of those people in the areas being annexed. But nobody ever had to ask the people that live in Clarkston, and I think we really need to do that. And I think maybe this could be a part of our um, you know, public outreach meetings that we're having with the zoning. Um we can, we'll have that contact, we'll have that exposure with the residents. And we can discuss with them and see if there's any demand for the people who are currently here. And if there's not, um you know, we're doing a cost benefit analysis in terms of what can you do for us? Like, can you bring in more money than we'll have to spend on you? But that's not saying what can we do for you, you know, for the people being annexed. That's my concern.
No, thank you, Councilwoman um Hopkins. Are there any other, yes, Councilman uh Carol?
I I I would just ask Robin, I I remember at the meeting, I think a lot of the opposition from people that would be annexed was, like you said, focused in the single family homes around Northern Avenue. If we were to exclude those single family homes and carve them out of the part to request annex, would that affect uh the calculations for expenses and revenues in any substantial way or would that not really matter that much to the calculations you've shown us so far?
It wouldn't alter it significantly. I did kind of quickly um look to do that, I just didn't finish the the exact calculation by looking at parcels, but uh it's not very many just on Northern, I believe it's a total of excuse me, um a total of forty-nine, you know, essentially, single family parcels, uh taking into account Pendleton Avenue of just to the west of Northern and then Northern, uh all the the single, I'm sorry, the single family parcels totaled forty-six. Uh since they are, they're not really very large, large homes and we're not the, you know, the I think very few of them are over twenty-five hundred square feet. Their uh assessment from the county isn't so the the tax um difference would not be the well, excuse me, the less revenue, uh it it is a little bit less, but not significantly, but I'll total that up precisely. Um but we're looking really at just, I mean, probably no more than ten to fifteen thousand dollars uh in property taxes, but I'll calculate that, but it's not significant to the point that we would be losing a a gigantic amount of revenue. So but something that that certainly will be calculated.
Comments or questions from council members? Hearing none. Mr. Gomez, did anyone else sign up for comments?
Mr. Medford did.
All right, Mr. Medford.
Yes, uh and actually I have spoken in favor of annexation pretty much anytime this has ever come up in public, including the inauguration last year in January, so uh I have spoken in favor of it many, many times. Um and I will say the same reason like I've said before. Uh my reasoning for annexation in three and four is for our kids. This includes the high school and the elementary school. We are absolutely lucky, we're getting a brand new elementary school. It'll be a absolutely wonderful new building surrounded by absolute crap. And those kids deserve better. I spent a year absolutely ticking off a large number of people in DeKalb County until I got a dangerous structure at Waverly Place Apartments torn down. Um DeKalb County has absolutely abandoned the area around the elementary school. It's not right, that's what's happened. Um I want that area to benefit the same way that Rocket Road Corridor did. Um when we annexed Rocket, the apartments that were back in there have improved so much since then. Um I think Clarkston can do that for areas three and four. Now, it won't be cheap. But I want for those people the same thing I already enjoy as a Clarkston resident. And of course, they get to vote on it, that is their right, if they want to be in Clarkston, they can. If they don't want to be, fine, it always needs to be up to the vote, no one needs to be forced in. But it has been very clear that DeKalb County has absolutely abandoned these areas. They've had a chance to fix it up, they've been, you know, code enforcement has basically walked away. Uh these areas serve our people. These areas serve Clarkston residents as well because they're right on the edge. Um and cleaning up some of these areas can benefit our own citizens just because they abut to the city. So um yes, let's see the numbers, looks like it'd be just barely beneficial financially to us to annex the areas. Uh but the big benefit to me is to the kids in this area. These kids deserve better and Clarkston can give it to them. That's just my own personal take on it. Thank you.
Um thank you, uh Mr. Medford for your comments. No, and Mr. Gomez, there weren't any other comments?
No, none.
Okay, all right, and then from the council? Okay, yes, Vice Mayor Yasu.
I wanna commend uh Mr. Medford for his comments on um on the idea of helping our neighbors, uh even though they are not in the city limit, um I think the city of Clarkston that that they usually feel that they are, they are living in the city limit and even though they are not technically. So uh I think that will first of all, give them more voice. Plus, uh the county has not been helpful if you, as you see, most of those roads are not in a good condition. And I think um the city of Clarkston, uh we are more nimble, uh I believe, than the county. Uh we don't have the resources probably, but I think we can definitely turn it around, just like uh this last m- Mr. Medford said, we did uh on Rocket Road. Uh still, we got work to do on Rocket Road, but I'm I'm pretty sure it's a lot safer and it's a lot better than it used to be. Um I I think there is nothing that, there is no reason for us not to be able to do the same thing also in these other areas. And if necessary, we could do it one at a time, uh instead of trying to get both areas, maybe we could focus only one area and get that done and we could try to see if we can do the other area, just like we did it before, so we didn't really do all of them at one time. We did it um staggered uh every year and we could do certainly the same thing again. So if uh if we feel like uh this area is more risky, well, let's focus only one, let's pick one of those two areas and let's see which one is more feasible at this point.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Yasu. Um if there are no other comments, we will move to adjourn the meeting. I take a moment.
Yeah, may I ask one question before we move to adjourn? I saw there's an, this this may be for uh City Attorney Quinn, I saw there was a need for, you mentioned a need for a legal executive session, is that something that needs to be done at this work session or is that something that can wait until we have the actual council meeting next week?
It was just an update for the council, so it could wait or we could do it tonight. Um it's nothing urgent, I I'm not asking y'all to make any decisions or anything. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, I can I can hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we can, we can make sure in terms of the agenda for next week that we add that as an agenda.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't know if there was a decision that had to be made tonight, but there's not, then I'm I'm fine waiting for another week.
Thanks.
I mean, unless you want to stay longer tonight, we're we're okay.
Just wanted to check.
Okay, all right, no problem. Okay, thank you. So I'll move to adjourn?
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.